Okay, welcome everybody to our last village board meeting for 2018. How about that? You know, I hope everybody's ready for the holidays and is prepared. So, I would like to start off with the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And just in time, our county legislator, Joel Tyner.
He'll be here.
Flash Tyner.
So it's an awesome thing that my wife has her own vehicle because 20 minutes ago I just lost my car keys, so.
Oh!
Yeah, so that's why I'm here in the nick of time. So I have a handout. About the county budget, just so folks are aware, if you want to come out and say whatever you want, this coming Monday, I believe at 6 o'clock, is the last full board meeting for the Dutchess County Legislature for the year. I apologize, I haven't been here in a month or two, but there's been some scheduling conflicts, so that's why I haven't been here. I'm thrilled and glad and appreciative of the fact that, for the first time in eight years, there's a five-day week restored to the county office for the aging senior friendship centers. That's something I've written about repeatedly in the Poughkeepsie Journal and other newspapers and fought for for eight years, introduced those budget amendments, and it's in the budget. I wasn't allowed to introduce the amendment this year, but that's okay, I'm glad that it's in there. The domestic abuse response team, I read, I think, a Poughkeepsie Journal article about a decade ago about this amazing program that really helps protect women in communities and sort of helps take the burden off them when they're under attack, under threat of domestic violence. And it started out with Poughkeepsie City, Poughkeepsie Town of Poughkeepsie, Hyde Park Beacon, and for many, many years, it's only been three or four municipalities out of 22 cities, towns, and villages. So that's something I've been chipping away and chipping away at for the better part of a decade, over a decade. I wasn't allowed to make the budget amendment, but I'm thrilled that after a decade of me chipping away at that, that's in there. So for the first time, I'm sort of, I still sort of pinch myself, a couple things that I've been told, sort of mocked and ridiculed and degraded and attacked repeatedly, that it's ridiculous, you know, senior citizens in Dutchess County, they don't want to, they don't really want a five-day week for the senior friendship centers. It'd be ridiculous to expand the DART program, you know, the county's domestic abuse response team, you know, it's really, in spite of the fact that a few years ago, the Dutchess County Citizens Advisory Committee on Domestic Violence, I had sort of worked to convince, and they had issued a report, that the DART program be expanded to at least Village of Ryanbeck and Wapato. So, thank God for small favors, those two things are in the 2019 county budget, which is good. For many years, I've been writing about the fact that there's been a massive change in the county sales tax revenue sharing formula, that, you know, three years in a row of this massive county fund balance, $55 million announced this year, $59 million announced last year, $57 million announced the year before. By way of context, from '96 until 2012, for those 17 years, the average fund balance was about $20 million. So there's plenty of money. So, I've basically been leading the charge for the last five years, saying the Village of Ryanbeck, the Town of Clinton, the Town of Ryanbeck, the City of Poughkeepsie, our municipalities need to get more of their fair share of the county sales tax revenue sharing formula. You've heard me talk about it ad infinitum, ad nauseam. It's finally happening. It's only $2 million they've added. $2 million split up among 22 municipalities. But it's something. It wasn't enough. It wasn't just me, there were four other legislators who voted no to the 2019 budget. Chris Munn from Red Hook, Fred Zernica, and Nick Page from down south, and Rebecca Edwards from the Town of Poughkeepsie. And I'm telling you, the fact that we don't have an Office of Consumer Affairs in the Dutchess County budget, which is something else I've been chipping away at, and I'm not going to stop speaking out about, because what I've noticed is that if I keep on pounding my head against the wall on this stuff, eventually it happens. So I'm going to keep on pounding my head against the wall in the Office of Consumer Affairs. Putnam County, rock-ribbed Conservative Putnam County, they have an Office of Consumer Affairs. Ulster County has one, Orange County has one, Westchester, Rockland, and credit where credit is due, State Senator Sue Serino, every year now, she does a big event educating senior citizens about consumer fraud and scams, and that's great, but not everybody can get to those events. It's a huge issue where tenants are being shafted by their landlords all over the county. It's a huge issue where people that I know, people that I know that are intelligent are falling for cyber scams, phone scams, people pretending to be IRS, et cetera. We don't have a Dutchess County Office of Consumer Affairs. We used to have one. Up until eight years ago, we had a Dutchess County Office of Consumer Affairs. It would take maybe $100,000, $200,000 to bring it back. In a $502 million county budget, with a $55 million fund balance, we need an Office of Consumer Affairs. It's the third year in a row of $5 million worth of jail overtime. There, it's about 30 people in the county jail, sometimes 30, 40, upwards of 50, who are just criminal possession of a controlled substance. That's all they've been charged with, of basically nonviolent drug offenders. I'm all about thinking differently, we have to think differently, we have to help people with disabilities. A judge in Massachusetts, New York Times did a big article on this, two weeks ago, a judge in Massachusetts decided it's a violation of the American with Disabilities Act for jails like Dutchess County to not have medication-assisted treatment, where people are cruelly detoxing. You know, there was a suicide, just in our county jail. We, the taxpayers of Ryanbeck, some people say, "Well, what are you talking about, Poughkeepsie all the time?" We're paying for the $274 million jail. We pay for it when our county is negligent. I'll just wrap up with this. I'm all about thinking differently. The Down Syndrome Association Hudson Valley, they asked for $40,000 for a bike camp, for reading tutors, and a behaviorist, they did not get it in the county budget. Poughkeepsie Public Library District asked Dutchess County for help with supportive environments for special needs patrons, they didn't get that into the budget. Mid-Hudson Workshop asked for workshop training help for those handicapped physically and mentally, they didn't get it. Now, I'm glad, again, I've been leading the charge for years, the Dutchess County Agency Partnership Grant Program, every year there's $2 million worth of requests from the nonprofits, and there's only $1 million worth of funding. I'm the only guy who's basically publicizing the actual names of the nonprofits, what they've asked for, what they've been denied, so I'm going to take a little bit of credit. We got $300,000 added to that program. You do the math, that still means there's going to be $700,000 worth of funding requests denied. I'll just say one more thing real briefly, I'll try to. Al Ragucci, who's the president of the Star Library here in Ryanbeck, on November 20th, the last thing I was expecting when I went to County Executive Malinares' budget forum, the last thing I was expecting was for the guy who was hosting the event to turn around and then very pointedly make a statement and a question about how come the resume-building class in the county jail, the trauma skills class in the county jail, the creative writing class in the county jail, the critical thinking, those classes led by Al Ragucci, you know, head of the Ryanbeck Library, and Pam Wright, who also lives right here in the Village of Ryanbeck, used to live in the Town of Clinton where I am, those classes are no longer. And there's study after study after study showing that if you, you know, you put a little bit of money in, those people are going to come out, unless they're mass murderers, they're coming out of the jail. And we should be penny wise as opposed to being pound foolish. I was in touch with the Governor's Office of Economic Development, for better or for worse, today. I just wanted to put this on your calendars if you can, it was going to be December 18th, it turns out she can't make it. I've been working with her, a couple months ago, I spent the whole day in Hartford, Connecticut. It was nextcentricities.org, muni networks.org, it was a big New England conference about municipal broadband. I had no idea until I drove all the way there. This woman's from the Town of Sharon, she's a selectman, a selectwoman, she's on the Sharon Town Board. There's 25 communities in northwestern Connecticut, just across the Dutchess County border, that are working on municipal broadband, they're about to have it, it's really cheap, and Mike Whitten from the Town of Clinton Town Board, he's going to be joining me. It's Tuesday, January 15th, 6:00 p.m., right across the way. Alan Scher from the Ryanbeck Town Board is working with me on this. I would love it if one or two folks from this board could consider working with me. That was a very long presentation, I'm sorry, you haven't seen me in a few months though, so.
Thank you, Joel. Okay, the next on our agenda is the AAA, which is amalgamated, I forget all of it.
Agricultural Association.
Association, sorry about that. And this was run through our planning board and has been brought forward to now to the village board, because the village board needs to be, take action on this proposal. So I would like trustee Rossi maybe to summarize, or maybe our planning board president, David Miller, if he could summarize it for us, and then we can move forward.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I want to appreciate, I want to express my appreciation for our planning board chair, David Miller, to be with us tonight, who also, I think, is the trustees and yourself, Mill, put together a wonderful graphic. And yes, before the village board tonight is item nine, which we'll talk to, we'll talk about in a few more minutes, and the plan, which was approved by the planning board, does have this contingency looking for the village board to make the approval on item number nine. But I would like to hand it off to Mr. Miller, because no one could better articulate than David the background, and I think he knows much more intelligently and succinctly than I can.
About a year ago, the applicant came to the planning board to turn Hobson's into a farm, farmer's market. The plan was, the building wasn't that attractive, there was a lot of seating, I think 12 picnic tables outside, two or three dozen chairs and tables inside, looked more like a restaurant than a farm stand. We were going to address that issue, but the first thing that came up is Hobson's had been vacant for a year, and technically, the use had lapsed. But in the interim, the applicant had converted it with Dutchess County to agricultural use. So a farm stand should technically be permitted to be there, even though it was in a residential district. Mr. Fenton was asked to rule on that, and he read over the agricultural rules, and it said, he found that a farm stand was permitted. The residents of Mill, which we've been concerned with from the very beginning to protect their privacy and their rights to be across the street from a bigger business than was there, sued, went to the ZBA, and the ZBA upheld Mr. Fenton's ruling that a farm stand was permitted. We were then going to go back and look to scale down the project and make it a little more attractive, the applicant went away for several months, came back this fall, we met with them, they had a new architect, Warren Smith, it was a much better design, looks really nice, like a farm market. It's now only three picnic tables outside instead of 12. Inside is just, I think, a dozen chairs and three tables, so it's much smaller than it was. They addressed lighting, so it doesn't shine on Mill Street, they put in fencing and planting, so it doesn't, you know, it blocks the view of the farm stand from Mill Street. They put in 18 parking spots, which is a couple more than is required, but the question came up, what happens if the market is really busy, or really crowded, or bigger success than they anticipated, where would people overflow, you know, parking? The first people to weigh in was Dutchess County and DOT, and they said, "No parking on Route 9." They want some, "No parking signs, it's far too dangerous." That left Mill. Pete Dunn and the fire department talked to Mr. Fenton and said, "It's very narrow, especially by Route 9, it widens up a little more as you get towards Parsonage." They would like to see a third row of parking, which we had maybe eight or nine more spots on the farm property. If that were done, they wanted no parking from the back of Hobson's to Route 9, if the parking wasn't there, they wanted no parking the entire length of, from all the way to Parsonage Street. So the applicant was not willing to lose farmland and build a parking, so we came up with a compromise, which we suggested, I think you all had a copy of this, I photoshopped this thing, so, there's no parking on the north side of Parsonage, I mean, north side of Mill, all the way to Parsonage, and there's no parking from Route 9 to the back entrance, but from the back entrance on the farm side, the south side, you could have maybe 16 spots there if it overflowed. And as a caveat in the resolution, we said that Sergeant Dunn would report to Mr. Fenton that if consistently there were a dozen cars or more parked on Mill Street, in a year or so, we would address the issue of maybe we need to talk to the applicant about adding a third row of parking on the property rather than on Mill Street. So the question is up to you, if you wanted to leave it the way it is with parking all over Mill Street, or follow Sergeant Dunn or the fire department with no parking at all on Mill, or our compromise where it's partial parking on the farm side of Mill, that's your decision to make. And that sums it up in a nutshell.
I'd only add that, and I believe it's been uploaded in the cloud, that both Chief ME and Sergeant Dunn have weighed in, and I think, and I don't want them to speak, that they're okay with the parking on the farm side.
Good.
Is that correct?
Yes, so, Mill Street dimensionally is a lot smaller from the exit entrance of Hobson's to 9, and then dimensionally it opens up. Kyle took a look at it, Sergeant Dunn looked at it, and the area from the exit entrance to Route 9, they definitely didn't want any parking at all on that. Where it starts to widen up, they were okay with the parking just being on one side, which is more the farm side, not the residential side. So that's basically the concept. If for some reason the business becomes very successful, and there's a lot of overflow, we'll basically monitor the parking situation. Worst case, if we have to revisit the site plan, we'll call the applicant back in, and we'll take a look at possible onsite additional parking. But that is only if there's issues in the future.
Do we have the authority to demand those extra spots if necessary, or is that a request on our behalf?
No, that would be more of a planning board issue. The board right now basically has the authority to request no parking on the public streets. So that's what we're focused on now. We're hoping that the no parking and allowing the one-side parking should really take care of the concern.
I think, in a different way, is the applicant open if we set a date a year from now to come back and readdress it? And say if there is parking?
So, this was a very long discussion of both the planning boards, and they adopted a resolution with several conditions, so one of the-
Victoria, would you like to come up to the microphone, please, so everybody?
Sure.
Thank you.
Victoria's the attorney for the applicant.
So, the planning board adopted a very thorough resolution with many, many conditions. One of the conditions does provide the planning board with the authority to require that extra parking be constructed in the future if there is an issue. And, you know, our client just didn't want to be the person to have to construct more parking than required under the code, there was no basis for it. I mean, everyone wants a successful business, but, you know, they meet the code, so there's no requirement to go above and beyond it. So, there is that authority for the town, the village to take another look at it if needed. If you're asking whether we can have this discussion in a year, I mean, the village board can take up the discussion of parking on Mill Street whenever you want. The way that the planning board drafted the Mill Street condition was that the village board either had to consider it or not consider it. So by having this discussion tonight, and if you vote not to do anything, that would satisfy that particular condition. If you voted to amend the parking, that would also satisfy it. So, it was just a recommendation and requirement that you have a discussion.
I just didn't want to rehash that, that's why I wanted to get it out and open now, that's all.
Yeah, no, tonight is just limited to whether or not the village board wants to limit parking on Mill Street.
Correct.
The site plan itself, you know, we're hoping we don't have to rehash ever.
But if we do, we need to go forward with a public hearing to be able to modify the conditions on Mill Street.
Usually it's a local law.
At the public hearing, I'll try to speak louder, at the public hearing, there were residents of Mill Street there, and I said to them, because they were very vocal during the suit period, that they hadn't said much at the public hearing, I said, "If we, I run down that street all the time, and there seems to be large, long parking areas and driveways on Mill," and I said, "Would any of you have a problem if there were no parking on Mill Street?" And, you know, they seemed all okay with it, they nodded, "It'd be okay."
No parking.
Right, if there were no parking at all, they wouldn't have a problem, if they could all find adequate parking for parties or guests kind of by in their long driveways, that they all seem to have along Mill.
So, amalgamated would prefer that you do allow parking on one side of the street in case they do need any overflow. The one side of the street is mainly just their property, it's just the farm, and so there's very little impact to the residents, partly because of those long driveways on the other side of the street.
And one of the planning board members said that, "Well, what happens if you want to have, you know, a pumpkin patch or a corn maze or something, you would have to go to Pat and ask for an event permit, you know, for a special event at the farm." So we made that clear.
And at that time, we could address parking for that event.
Right.
Any other questions from the board?
Yeah, I think I might have to recuse myself, because we got a campaign contribution from the applicant, and under the ethics code, we can't, I can't vote to give them a peculiar benefit for this amount, so I, we did go to public hearing, we have a certain amount of time, I'd like to request from the ethics board that they do an advisory opinion on it.
Good idea.
From my end.
So tonight-
I have all sorts of things I could say, but I'm not, that's why I'm super quiet.
Brad, rightfully, you brought that up, because I benefited from that campaign contribution as well. So I'm sensitive to, you know, involving the ethics board. I'm not sure that I necessarily feel compelled to recuse myself, but perhaps make my vote contingent on whatever feedback we get from the ethics board.
Well, that's what I mean, like, because recusal means I probably shouldn't contribute tonight, it's conditioned, if they give me the green light, then yeah, I'm not, but it's basically a temporary recusal.
I think this decision is more about the village and the residents, it's not, the site plan has been approved, they don't want to build a farm stand, it's not like you're voting on that, you're just voting on whether-
No, I mean, I just think in a retail setting, if you boost somebody's parking, then you might boost their revenues.
Well, actually, you'd be limiting parking. Right now, parking is permitted on both sides of Mill Street unrestricted, and so the fire department and the planning board have asked you to consider limiting the parking.
There's no benefit to the applicant on voting-
But my decision could be, could-
I appreciate, I appreciate it, and-
As long as you have a form.
Yeah, but what I've heard in the past was, you recuse yourself when you can monetarily gain from your vote. I don't know if you know-
I can't, it'd be unethical for me to comment on-
Yeah, but-
We could get an advisory position.
I think Brad's errant on that question.
Yeah, exactly.
But the decision tonight is whether we want to go forward with this-
Whether you want to prepare a local law to restrict parking or not.
Yes, that's really what we need, what is the decision tonight.
Okay, so I was at the meeting when the planning board approved the site plan, and what two of the planning board members had said was, correct me if I'm wrong, David, I don't think it was you, it wasn't you, but I don't know how you feel, but, they were in favor of parking on the street instead of taking away farmland for extra parking, which is kind of the way I feel. We don't have the problem yet, so I, I don't know, am I telling you now what my vote is going to be, or what?
What generated this is not the applicant, this is something coming from public safety.
Right.
Right, so this originated from PD and the fire department. You know, their concern was that if the streets were packed with vehicles, how are you getting a fire rig down there? You know, how are you getting an emergency vehicle down there? So, that's what generated this entire issue.
And both, and both, and both PD and the fire department said they have no issues, so, they weighed in, yeah, with the one-side parking.
Because even though White couldn't have parked on both sides and get a vehicle, so at least it's still too narrow.
Trustee Trout is correct, because I was obviously in attendance at that meeting as well, and there were two of the planning board members who said, "I don't want to surrender green space for street, left street, street-side parking." And I think there's something-
Yeah, there's something to be said to that, because this is the entryway into our village, and if you start creating parking density in the entryway, it is, it is a visual, there is a visual.
And I am glad that Mr. Miller referenced the plans from Warren Temple Smith, because if they were here tonight, I think the board would be impressed, it's going to make for an elegant gateway into the, into the village from the south.
It's a much, much nicer design. The applicant feels that they wouldn't have, you know, more than 18 cars parked there at any one time to anticipate that, and I think that it's been scaled down to the three picnic tables and 12 chairs, it's not like, you know, 50 people sitting there eating dinner, it's not going to happen. So, you know, it may be fine, we just put it in there as a place, because where else could you park? There is nowhere, there's Route 9, certainly on the other side of Route 9, extremely dangerous to cross the road, so there's no place to park except, you know, so this was the compromise we were at for overflow, should it happen.
Mr. Mayor, I would move that the planning board accept, the planning board, the village board accept the compromise structured and even recommended by the planning board.
Is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a second to the motion?
What does accept mean?
Accept means we're willing to go forward to develop a law and then go into public hearing.
So, really, the law would be to create a no parking zone on the north side of Mill Street, that's really what we're doing. Rick, essentially David's sketch. Yes, no, but there's, currently there was parking both sides of the street. So actually, the law we would be passing would to remove the parking on the westbound side of the street.
Correct. Well, north-
And a little bit from the rear entrance to Route 9 on the south side.
Right, and around that corner, too, which is a tough, tough visibility.
You mean, remove parking on the east side of the street?
The north side.
East side.
North.
Listen to the east side.
On the, no, on the north side, the parking-
The residential side.
On the north side of the street, on the westbound, on the westbound land.
All right.
On the westbound land.
So we have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all right. Any other, is there any other discussion? Because then what I'd like to do is do a poll, rather than a cast by vote, cast, all right? Any other discussion? All right, so I'm going to do, I'm going to do a poll vote, I'm going to start with trustee Trout.
Well, I'm not in favor of it.
Not in favor?
I'm not in favor of the no parking on both sides of the street.
No, no. Only no parking on the north side.
Yeah, that wasn't the motion that I had.
Just this stuff here.
Yeah, I'm not in favor of that.
Okay.
So you want parking on both sides?
Yes, there's no problem right now. I went to the meeting, so I kind of understand what's going on here. And I think at least two of the members of the planning board would agree with me, I don't know, you guys didn't take an informal vote on this thing, because you're letting up, you said you're putting it to us, so-
But they can't.
Couldn't have made the law.
Right, right. On the weekend.
But what John Clark said makes sense to me, so I'm voting against no parking on both sides of the street.
But that's not what I suggested. I was accepting, I was recommending a compromise of establishing no parking only on the residential side.
Right.
And now the-
That's the motion.
Right, or the idea, and the idea is that if there are cars parked on the south side, that leaves enough room for emergency vehicles. The issue would be if you have cars on both sides.
No, I know, I know, I know. But I just think we're automatically saying no parking, right there, that aside, yeah, when there's no problem. Now, I agree with the no parking from the back entrance to Route 9 on both sides of the street, but I don't agree with taking away parking from the back entrance to Parsonage Street.
Okay, okay. Trustee Lewis.
I think that I am comfortable with creating the no parking zone on the north side of Mill Street and a little section between Route 9 and the entrance of the back entrance of the farm stand. And I guess my concern would be, should it come to the eventuality over time, that there would be, for some reason, cars parked on both sides of the street, and we couldn't get an emergency vehicle through there, that would be of a concern for me. So it seems like out of prudence to create the no parking on the north side of Mill Street.
You're in favor of compromise?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, and to be clear, I think this was a compromise between the members.
Okay. But, all right, then the proposal.
And that's also with the caveat that should that south side of Mill Street parking be used a lot, then that we return to revisiting, creating more spaces internally on the lot.
Correct. We have that option to do at any time.
Right, at any time.
No, that's not clear.
Pardon?
You have, you always have the option to revisit your parking on your road.
Right.
But the lot itself is only an option if and when the Planning Board and Village Engineer determine that there's a, like, a safety issue due to all the parking being used.
Cool, oh, okay.
Okay, so I just want to be clear, it's not anytime. There actually has to be documented evidence of a parking issue.
Right.
Okay, I want to figure out what issue.
Fire trucks can't get through, police can't get through, et cetera. Trusty Rossi?
No, I'm, I'm supporting you of the motion that I presented to the board, notwithstanding the very valuable point that Trusty Nunica has raised. But that said, I'm confident that it doesn't, won't be a conflict, so I'm supporting it, the compromise.
Correct.
Structured by the Planning Board.
I'm abstaining for none.
That's fine. And so that's, how many, what is it, one?
You have two guesses and one no, and one with two.
And my position is, I don't like to take away green space. I think we need to preserve as much green space as possible on the village until we do that, so I am also in approval of the current design presented by, by the parties. So, one abstaining, three in favor, one against. Okay.
Just one last comment, that throughout the whole process, our main concern was the residents of Mill, and you'll be here for number, should the public hearing, and trying to preserve, they have a very quiet street now, and a major business is parking on both sides, but certainly quite a difference from what they have now. And John Clark has thought that there could be at least 16 cars, maybe more, going from the back entrance of those way to Parsonage, should be way more, it's doubling their parking.
It's doubled.
But key to that, you said the residents didn't have, at your meeting, did not have an objection to the parking.
To, to no parking at all.
Oh, no parking at all, oh.
Right. We never got to the, you know, the compromise, and said you like the compromise. Let me ask that question.
So I think we're going to go forward to create a law and go into public hearing.
Go into public hearing, yeah.
Okay, so I'll keep an eye on the agenda, and if you wouldn't mind letting me know when you are setting-
Oh, absolutely. It would have to be public notice that we need to set.
Thank you.
Does anybody, I mean, we could go forward and set a date for the public hearing tonight, but I don't know how long it's going to take to cast a law, so I would rather wait and seek legal advice and, and then move forward with setting that date. Thank you.
I'd like to thank, again, both Mr. Fenton, our CEO, and of course, the Chair of the Planning Board, David Miller, for assisting us tonight. Thanks, guys.
Okay, next on the agenda, public, public comment. Is there anybody here for public comment this evening? Higgins, come forward. Thank you, David, thanks.
Paul Higgins, five Rockefeller Lane. I have a letter that I read to you, which I'd like to read, and I'd like to read my letter and present it to the representative. How's that? Is that better? Okay.
Well, I'm not sure it's on.
I don't know if it's on.
I thought this only mentioned that, but it's okay. Okay, does that work?
No.
Okay, how's this?
Wow. He's a mixer.
Yeah.
Okay.
That's better.
Okay. "As you know, I'm a member of a large group of concerned village residents working to influence any legislation and code provisions that you propose regarding Airbnb businesses in the village. Arguably, this is one of the most significant, far-reaching issues to come before you. Your decisions will impact the quality of life in the village for years to come. Over the past year, you have heard significant, consistent, and growing opposition from your constituents, and there's no question in my mind that the explosion of Airbnbs has already had a negative effect on the character of the village. If you permit this to continue, the village will be changed forever. The working group and a majority of the Village Board began with the premise that Airbnb businesses was, are good for all communities, including Rhinebeck, and that Rhinebeck is no different. Rhinebeck is, but it is. With Airbnb corporate talking points in mind, committee and Village Board discussions proceeded, and proposed, and proposed code revisions were developed based largely on anecdotal information. In fact, there's been little or no data presented that support the assumptions made about the benefits of Airbnb businesses bring to a community. There's been no clearly articulated rationale to support legislation and code revisions that will legalize Airbnb businesses in the village. I have watched as you struggle to balance the perceived needs of a few village residents over the clear wishes of most village residents. Sadly, your efforts to date have resulted in many unnecessary, complex code revisions that are easily misunderstood and cannot be fairly applied or consistently administered, let alone enforced. If enacted, they will undoubtedly result in unnecessary costly litigation. Therefore, I'm calling on you tonight to abandon your efforts to legalize Airbnb businesses in the village of Rhinebeck that are not owner-occupied while continuing the development of code provisions that include a strict permitting process. Code provisions must be fair, unambiguous, and enforceable. There's little public support for your current course of action. This is evidenced by near total lack of attendance and participation in public meetings from residents who agree that Airbnbs should be allowed in the village. A review of meeting minutes and statements disclosed as part of a FOIL request confirms this. To the contrary, village residents are overwhelmingly opposed, as evidenced by attendance and public comments at every Village Board meeting and every workshop. Presentation of a letter of opposition signed by over 100 village residents is further evidence of the public's opposition. It is my sincere hope that you will have the courage to reverse course and propose legislation and appropriate code revisions that will expressly prohibit Airbnb businesses that are not owner-occupied from operating in the village of Rhinebeck. In doing so, you will be acting in a manner that is consistent with the majority, with the wishes of the majority of village residents, and perhaps more importantly, you'll be protecting the character of the village. Thank you."
Can I have that letter, Paul?
Yes, I have one for each. Thank you.
Is there anybody else signing up for public comment?
No, no one has signed up.
Anybody else for public comment? Having seen no other informa, no other public comment, we're moving forward to the department reports and going to the treasurer's report.
Okay, good evening. The treasurer's report for the village of Rhinebeck is for the period ending November 30th. The tax collectors' account ended the month with $727,378.95. The general fund ended the month with $80,721.68. The water fund ended the month with $491,746.31. And the sewer fund ended the month with $418,715.87. The New York class accounts average a yield of 2.09%, and they're doing well. The vouchers presented for payment, including prepaid for the general fund, total $310,703.67. In the water fund, $52,088.10. In the sewer fund, $37,465.08. There is a payment for the block grant for Legion Park of $1,306.25. For the capital water, for the lagoon dredging and dewatering, of $45,280. And in the capital water also, for the water system upgrade, in the amount of $2,340. And an escrow bill in the amount of $457. The monthly operating statement, an operating statement, is provided for revenue and expenditures through December 11th, 2018. Water and wastewater billing and adjustment reports have been reviewed and signed off by the Water and Wastewater Department liaisons and are presented for authorization.
I make a motion to accept the wastewater adjustments as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carried.
And I make a motion to accept the water adjustments as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Carried.
So, next are budget adjustments. I have a few. Transfer of funds for that block grant in the amount of $1,306.23 will be covered by the general fund cash until reimbursement from the county takes place. In the general fund, I have, from the revenue account, 2089, to the police salaries account, 31201.01, in the amount of $1,775. This is pretty much a wash. It's just to allocate the running-away reimbursement to the police salaries. Also, from the account of 2089, to the account of 7560.04, which is, I'll have to go back to my report here real quick, because that 7560.04 is an account that has been created for, like, other performing arts and events. And at this time, we have an event for Cinderclaws that, that supplies and equipment was charged there in the amount of $1,129. We did receive a donation from Cinderclaws in the amount of $3,000. So that will go into that, to that revenue account. Also, I'm requesting from the 1990.04 contingency to the 31204 police fees on employees, an amount of $3,000, also for unanticipated expenses for events and other items in the police department. In the water department, I'm requesting a decrease in 1440 engineering, an increase in 1420 attorney fees of $5,000. The expenses in that engineering is trending to be under budget, and that attorney is over budget for legal union services. In the sewer fund, the same, the 1440 engineering account, I'm requesting that be transferred to the 8310.13 sewer transmission fees on employees, and that is over budget due to charging camo for, for operating services. So those are my proposed budget amendments.
We have canceled camo.
Thank you.
Right, this was the last month for that.
Right, okay. I'd like to make a motion to accept the budget amendments as presented by our treasurer.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Thank you.
So, the last item on my report is for the upcoming budget 2019-20, and for the proposal of putting together some dates for the budget workshops.
Sure. So the treasurer and I worked on a schedule. As, as you know, our budget is due the end of May of next year, so we're into the 2019-20 planning session right now, and in order to prepare for that budget, we've set some specific dates for working on the budget. 1/15, January 15th of 2019, we'll review the police and fire budgets. January 22nd, highway, building planning and zoning and building maintenance. January 29th, water and sewer. February 5th, the general fund, and then on March 5th, the review of the proposed budget with a public hearing set at a regular meeting on April 9th. So that gives us some, you know, some time after we've gone through the detail of each budget to do a review, and then some more time after the result of the review to address issues in preparation for the public hearing on April 9th. And in plenty of time for us to meet our objective of getting the budgets in in time, you know, for next year. Okay? Anybody have any discuss, any discussion in regard to the budget schedule? So I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the schedule for our next-year budget planning session with a public hearing at a regular meeting on April 9th.
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Thank you.
And just one quick housekeeping. Chrissy asked if you could have the vouchers signed by tomorrow so that we can get the bills paid by Thursday, because she won't be Friday.
Thank you. Police and court. There's fire, or is police and court? Pat, I don't have police and court. I have it, I'm sorry, I found it. My mistake. Police and court. For police, this is for the month of November. Total number of incidents in town was 25, total number of incidents in the village 110. Total number of tickets in town is 26, total number of tickets in the village 75, total number of arrests 8, total number of accidents was 9. There was extra coverage provided for the turkey trot and the Chamber of Commerce tree lighting, as well as Cinderclaws. At Cinderclaws, we had a total of calls for service of 18, number of arrests was 3, number of vehicles towed was 2, and number of parking tickets was 34. And in addition, we had a speed trailer set up on East Market Street entering the village on December 1st, from 11:00 to 6:00 p.m., with a total of 1,126 cars, with the average speed of 38 mile per hour, and a total number of vehicles above 30 mile per hour. Speed limit was 938. Majority of vehicles were traveling between 31 and 45. Any questions on the police report? Court? Second? Court ticket, total tickets completed for both court sessions and mailed in for the month was 100, and revenue from the state was $3,019.50. Next, we also have from our police, we need to adopt, as you remember, I forget which month it was, we approved the purchase of cameras that would be used in our police vehicle cars. They're not body cams, they are cameras that are in the car that are used to focus out in front of the, of any time there's an accident or arrest or whatever, and there's a microphone that is worn by our officers. Part of that equipment was being able to not only have that recording, but having a way to store the equipment, to store the information, which required an additional server over in our police department to be installed, so when the cars come in, they automatically gets downloaded to the server and everything gets saved, which we would save that information for a number of, total number of 180 days on the information. So within here is the report, I'm not going to go through all of it because it's long, I hope the board has had a chance to review it, and it's been reviewed by legal in terms of the, and the union, in terms of being in compliance, so I'd like to have a motion to accept the mobile recording equipment policy for our police department.
I'll move it.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Fire Department. Give me one second to get back to that. We have a nice bit of information to go through in the Fire Department tonight. So first, what I'd like to do is just go through, forward with the report for the Fire Department. Chief Amy is here. Do you mind if I read the report, chief? Do you mind if I read the report, chief?
Go ahead.
For the month of November 2018, there were a total of 63 calls. There were 16 fire calls, 40 EMS calls, and seven motor vehicle accidents. They responded to mutual aid departments nine times. The ambulance did respond, did not respond to nine calls. Therefore, the response percentage was 80%. The fire department provided, the fire department provided fire and EMS coverage at CenterClaws. Amazing number of people turned out in support of the fire department. We had 28 members on standby from 8:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m. During the event, one EMS call was handled, and they also received standby coverage from Red Hook Fire Department, Tivoli Fire Department, while our ambulance handled a transport to Vassar Hospital. Okay, next, any questions about the fire report?
How does the EMS calls compare to last year? One, two, remember last year?
Chief?
How many EMS calls were there last year, just out of curiosity? Do you remember?
Um, maybe one or two. Those are my... Presidio, can you help me?
Yeah.
So, the next thing I'd like to do is, at the November meeting, or December 1st meeting, excuse me, the fire department elects officers. And tonight, I would like to have the board vote on the nomination of the officers selected by our fire department. I would also like to have them come forward and be recognized formally as part of their elected official. I think this is a fantastic, and I, opportunity for our fire department to get recognition is also, I want to thank our fire department and their members for standing up and taking such a valuable role in providing fire coverage for the village and the protective district in Rhinebeck. So, first, I would like to have Chief Kyle Amy, who is reelected, come forward, please. How many times is this, chief?
Oh, nine, maybe.
And then Assistant Chief, Brian Knapp. I like to do these in groups, so I would like to make a motion to accept Chief Kyle Amy and Assistant Chief Brian Knapp as chief and assistant chief for the Rhinebeck Fire Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Thank you. Next, Stone Gleave. Well, you all still stay up there. They need to look at you a little bit longer. For fire, First Captain Peter Fraley, come forward. I don't see Todd. Todd's not, so second, pardon?
Todd was in the building.
Okay. Second captain is Todd Leary. First Lieutenant Sheldon Teeter. Second Lieutenant Joe Gata. Thank you guys as well for your service and support of the village and the protective district. So, I'd like to make a nomination to accept the first captain, second captain, first lieutenant, and second lieutenant to the Village of Rhinebeck Fire Department.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Carried. Thank you. EMS, now, very, another important service. We have the fireside, but we all know that a lot of our calls are also associated with EMS. So, again, I would like to congratulate Chrissy Amy as captain of the EMS. First Lieutenant Jeff Cotter. I don't see Henry. Henry's not here. Right. So, I'd like to make a motion to accept the nominations of Captain Chrissy Amy, First Lieutenant Jeff Cotter, Second Lieutenant Henry DeFries to the EMS fire, EMS department for the Village of Rhinebeck.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carried. I don't, I guess Tim's not here either? All right. So, Fire Police Captain Tim Day, I believe this is his second, correct, as our Fire Police Captain? So, I'd like to nominate, make a motion to have Tim Day nominated as captain of the Fire Police.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Thank you all for your service and support for the Village of Rhinebeck. I'm so glad you're here. We do not accept nominations or vote on the civil side of the fire department, but there is also an operational side of our fire department, which they do elect officers and so forth. President is Mark Brown, Vice President Sony Framan, Recording Secretary Bob Barbary, Financial Secretary Leanne Pitcher, and Treasurer John Imperato. So, thank you for all of them who serve at our, on our behalf and provide us protection. Next, highway, no, excuse me, building, planning, and zoning.
Sorry, Mr. Mayor, just lost.
Yeah, takes a while to get called up.
My connection, no, no. Of course, if anybody has it on paper, I'll just use that. Trying to get back to the link that Pat provided.
That's one thing I didn't print out, really.
So.
Is he there?
Yeah, I lost the connection trying to...
Would you like me to read it?
If you wouldn't mind, Mr. Mayor.
No, I don't mind. All right, building, planning, and zoning report, I'll read for Trustee Rossi tonight. Building and planning department, six COs and municipal, and for, there were six? Is that how you read it? Six?
Yes.
COs and municipal searches for a total of $750. Building permits for a total of $550. Fire, there were no fire inspections in the last month. The planning board had no escrows and fees, fees and approvals were $75, and total was We also, if we want to go, I don't know, do we want to deal with, I didn't think we were going to deal with our building, planning changes this evening unless the board would like to review that because, in terms of where we're at. We do have a bid that we talked about in terms of going forward with the renovations from DeWire Construction, which was $31,891 for the renovation for, and that included upstairs and downstairs, correct?
Just upstairs.
Just upstairs. Did not include the downstairs? All right. Is he going to put, do a bid for the downstairs? Are you going to give this?
No, I think it's very minor. We're just talking about a non, you know, load bearing wall, partition wall. Theoretically, we could do it in-house if we decided on that route.
I mean, would the, would the board like to still consider this? Or, last time, we said we needed more information. I believe we still need a conceptual drawing of what needs to be done?
We do have one. I didn't think we were talking about it tonight, but we do have a drawing, a floor plan done up by Crawford.
All right, so I'd like to postpone this for a while longer until we do, the board gets more information, okay? Anybody in favor? Anybody okay with that?
Yeah, I agree.
Table.
Table that. All right. The asbestos RFP reward. The last board meeting, we talked about, in addition to the construction of our platform lift, there was a concern about asbestos within the village hall, so we approved the budget not to exceed the $3,000, and we did get bids in for the asbestos removal. Sorry, I went too far. And there was three bids submitted. One was by the Albany Environmental Construction Group for $1,600. Another one by Alpine Environmental Services for $500, and the third by Ambient Environment Inc. for $1,200 for evaluation for the asbestos for our planning. Our engineers had looked over and based on Crawford Associates' review of the proposals and discussion with the village, CNA recommends that the village award the work to Alpine Environmental Services. CNA has worked with Alpine Environmental Service in the past and find them to be a reputable company. So, Alpine Environmental Services was $500 for the evaluation of asbestos. I would like to make a motion to accept Alpine Environmental Services to do the asbestos evaluation.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, is this in the basement area?
It covers all portions of the area that are impacted by the construction for our elevator, our platform lift, not elevator. And if you remember from last time, it was, there was some feeling that it was associated with some of the tile that was on the floor, and I think some plumbing.
Plumbing insulation.
Plumbing insulation.
It's just concentrated solely on the construction area of the roof.
Okay? You okay with that?
John, do you know the company?
I have heard of it. Yeah, perfect.
All right, so we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor of accepting Alpine Environmental Services for the asbestos?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Thank you. So, we can move forward with that. What I didn't read, they can get started immediately, is that correct? While we're on kind of building, planning, and zoning, a little bit about what's going on out front. If you saw a large excavator out front, right? Our DVW, would you like to just give a brief announcement of what's going there for the public?
So, tomorrow, we plan on closing a small portion of Center Street. We're actually going to remove a 2,000 gallon underground well tank. So, and we're hoping it goes smoothly. So, I didn't anticipate the machine to be that large, but 2,000 gallon tank, we just don't know what exactly, what size it is. And we know it's 2,000 gallons.
It's like a swimming pool.
It'll take a little mini animal down there. And we'll say...
So, we do have new tanks put into the basement. So, our heating system is operational, and we don't have to worry about that. And the excess tank, excess oil that was in the tank was distributed to our village departments, and there was still a slight bit left over that we set up a storage at the highway garage that we can then pump that into when we need it. So, we were able to use what we had and not get rid of anything. So, that was, that was an important move on everybody's part. So, thank you for, John, for leading that effort. It's really moving along very nicely. And eventually, we'll hopefully get it all set back to normal, and nobody will know. All right? All right, now, last time, we set a date for the Northern Dutch Hospital zoning revision draft of January 22nd, which is a conflict. We need to revise that date from January 22nd. I don't, I don't remember what the conflict is. Pat, do you?
Well, we had the budget meeting.
Planning Board.
Oh, the Planning Board is here. Right. So, we need to set a new date for, for the, for that revision of the draft to reset. Is there any available dates?
On a Tuesday, I didn't put the dates that you just approved.
I can go back to them if you would like.
It's the 29th, is that one of your budgets?
We have water and sewer, but we could do both.
Right.
All right, so, eight would be too soon. The 15th, Planning Board, the 12th is our meeting, the 19th is True Commission of Planning Board. Tuesdays are not good. Sorry.
Yeah, they're not.
Wednesday, the 23rd would be available.
Is the board okay with the 23rd? We'd be going back to back. That's all right with everybody? It is budget season.
It's been done before.
Right. It is budget season, so we're used to meeting on a regular basis during budget season. So, if you don't mind, another meeting on the 23rd?
Sure. Yeah.
So, make a mo, do we need a motion for that? I don't think that'll right. So, we'll move the date for the zoning revision to January 23rd. Highway Department.
Let me finish getting that date in here. Okay. So, first off, I want to thank the Highway Department for helping to get the village ready for CenterClaws. It is their job to make sure that the streets are clean, as many leaves as possible are out of the way, and also on the day of, we have Highway Department personnel manning several trucks in the area, and they did, I think, a really great job of getting the village ready for CenterClaws and cleaning up quickly and effectively afterwards. So, I'd like to thank those guys for being on the case for that. In addition, the department was doing its normal brush removal, mulch deliveries, cold patching, leaf pickup, catch basin cleanouts, and keeping Market Street clean. One thing that, we do have a bit of an issue is that Leaf Removal Way, we have a wonderful new leaf vacuum truck that everybody's seen going around the village. Technically, December 1st is our cutoff for leaf pickup. However, that's always been a soft date, and also this year, we had an early snowstorm which prevented leaf pickup from continuing. But we'd like to see people get their leaves out within the next, soon, because soon it will snow. Yeah, really soon, because soon it will snow, and that will, that'll preclude any, any, any of our ability to pick up leaves anymore. So, we ask villages if they can front load the process when possible. This year, it's been a little more complicated, but get them out, we're going to try to pick up the last bits, and then it's on to snow.
So, we're on a day-by-day?
Day-by-day.
Thank you.
That's it.
That's it?
So, for the November report, boiler got, worked on a couple of times, thermostats were replaced, block tank failed, and Brian and Alan Bateman, the new person, got in there and repaired the drain valve. Importantly, the, the sludge removal project has started. The dredge boat is in the lagoon. They are pumping, they have a giant pump. They swirl up the water, and, and there's a, basically a giant trash pump, which, you know, that's not a great name for a pump, but that's what it is. That's what they call it. And then there's an eight-inch pipe, and it goes up to the, what Pat calls the pillows. There's a, a flat area that's been removed and brushed and trees, and there's these big, they're like giant geo, geotech teabags, and they pump the slurry in there, and then the water drains out. So, that is well underway. We, they hit a bunch, several pay points, and now this, this stuff is being dredged out of the lagoon. We have plenty of money in the project for it. The critical part of the project was this first phase where they get everything mobilized and underway, so the rest is going to be kind of easier. So, even if it, it has frozen up, maybe he can continue next week and do some more dredging. But if he gets frozen out, that's fine, he can, he can commence, recommence in March, April, and finish the project. So, we did have a, just FYI, we do have an invoice that's been approved by Larios, Brinear and Larios, for $45,000, $45,280.
It was in the Treasury report.
Yeah, that's right. That adjustment was in there. So, also importantly, we did get the 2.2, you've announced, we've got the 2.2 million dollar grant for the, from the Environmental Facilities Corp. And Karen and I have, we did back-of-the-envelope kind of calculations. I mean, it's a tremendous boost to the proposed 3.7 million dollar budget. So, if we put $250,000 down payment, which we pledged, and we get the 2.2 some odd million dollars, and we come in at around 3.7, we're basically, we could go into the open market and bond out at a million, $250,000. We are putting away $170,000 a year for the lagoon and, and for the, for this project. So, and we're retiring, when did we retire the $50,000 bond? Was it last fiscal year?
Last year.
Yeah. So, we have this stuff, we have space for this, and we actually can structure this gigantic project within the, the water rate framework that we have now. So, that's good.
We also have another possibility of another grant.
There's still something out there on the table?
Yes, there are. We have $400,000? $400,000 from the Regional Economic Development Council, which is going, is going to be announced... $400,000 from the Regional Economic Development Council, which is gonna, is gonna be announced on December 18th.
Okay.
But we don't know if we're in or out.
Right.
We have no, we have no.
I think of the, the R E T C grants that we did, the three of them, and certainly this is the most important one. You're permitted to seek grants from more than one source. This was the big one, the 2.2. If we get the 400, it will minimize the bonding that we would be required to do. I, I have no idea, I think it's a long shot, but.
Never know.
We don't know. We don't know.
So.
We'll know on the 18th.
Right.
Trustee Rossi and myself are going to Albany.
Alright.
We did get an invitation to go, so I.
Does that mean anything?
It might not be a long shot.
We, we did get an invitation to go. And I invited Trustee Rossi to, to come with me since he was very supportive in the grant process for us. Typically, you don't get an invitation otherwise, but there's no guarantee.
Sure.
So, on December 18th, we're going to Albany.
We put our feelings out, the best we could, we put our feelings out to see, surely this must mean something and we can't, we can't get any, any real feedback, but seems.
If on anything, it gives us a chance to be in front of, of people who make the decisions. We guess, we, we can get one-on-one time and I believe that was instrumental in all the work that we did before in terms of trying to go forward. Several trips to Albany, trips to Senator, I mean Assemblyman Cahill, were, was, was very influential. Meeting with Senators for New York State, Sue Serino and, and other public officials around, and getting letters of endorsement from the area was extremely beneficial in helping us to get this 2.2 million dollars. But this board did a lot of work. It took many years to get to this point, but we were only two years in trying to get the grant, which is, and for water, which is, which is exceptional.
It's difficult to get a grant for your distribution system, which is a plumbing underground, because a lot of folks have an aging infrastructure, but we demonstrated the need, so.
Yeah.
It's great. So there's a lot of stuff to do. I'm trying to get ahold of Stan Tech so they can come in and we can powwow and.
So the next, that's the next step.
That's the next step. Also, we still have a pay point with, with Stan Tech where they are, we have agreed to give them $4,800 for them to do the bid documentation.
Yep.
Now, John and I were talking, John Fenton and I were talking about just to go out to bid on the construction management and con, clerk of the works kind of construction management and contract management piece of this. And we think we can just do the, the RP, RP with, you know, the four of us basically, you know, clerk, treasurer, and John Fenton and me and, or whoever, you know, we need.
I believe we, that's an important component.
Because it's a service that, you know, a lot of engineering companies can provide and, and they'll sharpen their numbers if they're competing against each other. So a lot of stuff to do, but I'll have more next month on that.
Okay.
And then there's one other thing, we did get in the second phase of the low lift project for the, to put holes in the side and allow the seawater to come in if it comes in and replace the sump pump at the bottom and then do these, the vac, what is the, I don't understand vacuum pumps very well, but to do the framework to hold the vacuum pumps.
Right, it's structures hold it, keep it in place from flowing. And the other item was electrically, they wanted to kind of reposition the location. The dehumidifier, which is downstairs, was suggested by the engineer to put upstairs. It's ideal to keep it downstairs, that's where all the conversation is, so there were a few other changes.
We're gonna do the epoxy painting in-house, because this doesn't include that. So we, they did solicit a bunch of bids and we got one response and it's from the electrical contractor that's doing Phase 1. So the amount is $24,750. Now, the first phase was $19,147 for construction, which puts us at $43,900. We have, we had, if you recall, a $32,000 grant, it's matching, so we pledged 32 and we got a $32,000 grant. So we're still, even with engineering costs, which are additional, and I don't have them with me right now, we're under. So, I would like to get resolution from you guys approving Osterhout Electric to do the, the flood vent insulation.
So it was last year at this time that we received a $32,000 grant from the Regional Economic Development Council, which was, you know, definitely helpful in helping us to move this forward. We put a lot of effort into providing clean water for our village and town residents that are on our water supply. As you can see by the amount of effort that we're putting into the effects of sea level rise, which is the low lift pump stations, which would, which just dramatically improves, cleaning out our lagoon to make sure that we have available space for sediment, and then the big one, rebuilding our infrastructure for our distribution system. So, this board has focused very well on making sure that we continue to provide water, which is a needed reliable resource to the village residents. And it's not only for drinking, the distribution system is totally inadequate if we have a fire. There's four-inch mains running up Platt Livingston and Chestnut, Platt, Chestnut and Livingston Street, and to service a fire hydrant, you need a minimum of a six-inch main right now. So all these would be upgraded to six-inch, as well as our main supply going down Route 9 from 8 to 12, correct? Is that, if I remember right, is it 8 to 12 inches?
Wait, Route 9 is 6 to 12.
6 to 12.
Yeah, 6 to 12.
Up to 12.
It's 6 to, it's tuberculated pipe, like, meaning it's all clogged and also.
Yeah, so. Is that a motion to move forward?
Yeah, for $24,750 for the Osterhout.
Still within budget.
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So carried? Very good.
That's it.
Doing a lot.
So next one's gonna be even bigger.
We do have to focus on the plant access road.
Yes.
We really should take a look at that.
Right. There was three things called out in the study that we did on sea level rise and the impact of sea level rise on, on our water plant, which is down in the Hamlin and Reincliffe off Slate Dock Road. First was the low lift pump stations, because if they're flooded, we have no ability to supply water to our tanks up on highly and therefore our 2 million gallon tank up there in three days, is that, that's our supply, we would not be able to do that. The second was our road and our access into our road, because if we can't get access to the plant, obviously, we will not be able to provide the services. We could probably walk in from the back hillside, but we can't get trucks, chemicals, supplies, and so forth and so. We, we felt that the primary concern due to sea level rise, which could happen in the year, you know, within, you know, 2021, is basically when we could be hit by another, if we were hit by another storm like Superstorm Sandy, with high tide would flood our low lift pump stations. This will prevent anything from happening and protect that form of pump. And then the next thing would be this, as John mentioned, our access to our road.
Can I ask Brian a quick question?
Yeah.
How long does it take for that lagoon to be dredged? I mean, under ideal conditions?
They'll probably be done by May.
Oh, okay, so I can go down and look at it.
You have time.
It's not, it's not gonna be done next week then, right?
Well, if, once it freezes up, they're stopped, they have to stop anyways.
I think they have to get, there's another bag too. So, they're gonna fill these two bags. They, they expand up to eight feet, the guy told me, and then they, the water seeps out out of the pores and, and then scrunches down. The idea is to get it to almost like the consistence, the debris to get the consistency of clay. It's 30% solids and it's like a clay law.
So it's a big giant pillow?
Yeah.
It's a pillow.
Very good, Brian, thank you.
Great, thanks.
Waste water?
Okay, for November 2018, the amount of wastewater treated was 5 million gallons. Gallons of sludge processed was 32,100 gallons. And pounds of sludge processed was 4,607 pounds. Just want to report that the new employee, David Seacor, started on November 9th and everything's going well. Very excited and eager to learn.
A month already?
Yeah, already, yeah. Very good. And KMO's been relieved of their duties, right John?
Right.
Okay.
The two new guys stepped up and helped out with Center Closet, so.
Yeah. Both guys did.
Yeah.
Both new people. Our Water Department, Alan Bell and David Seacor, all volunteered with the Highway Staff to help us, you know, manage the cleanup and the protection at Center Closet. That was, it was great to see them all here, it was a great team effort by the, by everybody.
I just want to thank Mike Trumper from KMO Pollution for helping us out in our time in need when we were down an employee for around six months, maybe.
And on and off.
Yeah.
Okay, did it?
That's it.
I'd like to make a motion to accept all of the department reports as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? So carried? Committee reports. First, first one on the agenda is the Autism Support Committee. For those who have been following our activities, we had a lot of recent activities in regard to the autism supportive community, which on the tree lighting event held on November 25th, we created an autism support community sensory safe space. So I would like to give thanks to the Reinbeck Art Gallery on Market Street and the Reinbeck Chamber of Commerce for helping to facilitate having that safe space. It was, it was interesting, there were several families that were made use of the safe space and there was one family that had never been able to have their child at a parade and was able to do that because we had provided that space. So, it was, it was well, well supportive. We also released a mission statement and put it out on our email distribution in terms of our direction for providing autism supportive community, which is the Village of Reinbeck. And the Village of Reinbeck will be the first in the region and possibly the first in the state to have as a community be an autism support community. The third thing we did since our last meeting was, we've now added basically another partner and that's a communications partner. In addition to the Village of Reinbeck and the Anderson Center for Autism, we're now partnering with KL Communications. KL Communications handles all of the PR for the, for Anderson, for the Anderson Center for Autism. They would like to work with it, with us on all of our announcements to get that publicity out for us. So we've had one initial meeting and we've agreed to go forward to incorporate them in all of our discussions using KL Communications and it's at no charge to the, the villages to do that. It'll give us a much broader outreach in terms of the communication and the effort that we're trying to do. I have a meeting set up on the 12th, which is tomorrow, with our committee chair, Michelle Hughes, so we can start setting further agendas in place. And we've also had the request for the Village of Reinbeck to have the designation of the, of an autism supportive environment. When I say the Village of Reinbeck, the Village Hall, that means the people who work here in Village Hall. Our county executive, Mark Molinaro, runs a program called Think Differently. Think Differently has endorsed our awareness for autism, but as an endorsement, we are not part of the Think Differently campaign. But Think Differently does provide education to businesses on a one-on-one basis for the support of autism. It would be a two-hour training session for everybody here in Village Hall and we could have the unique designation of having the village center, or Village Hall, be an autism supportive environment, as well as being the autism supportive hub for the village, for the Village of Reinbeck. And this documentation is included within the minutes, but I would like to have your support in working with our employees, you know, to be an autism supportive environment, which is supported by Think Differently and our county executive, Mark Molinaro.
They come to us to do the.
They will come to us, yes. Training would be done here, it would take approximately two hours to conduct the training and it will enable us to also think broader in our outreach to the community.
Are employees receptive to, to this?
I, we have not called the employees, I wanted to bring it to the board and if the board is in favor, then I would like to take it forward to the employees and, and move forward.
Would it be just the Village Hall employees or all our employees?
It would be, it would focus on the Village Hall, not water, wastewater, and sort of, we can expand it, but right now my focus was just here in Village Hall. This is where people come and majority, they don't go to our Water Department and our Highway Department.
Public buildings.
Public building, yes.
I, I'm just still unsure of the, the implications that it might represent to the flow of work and the existing flow of the public. Are we anticipating that there's such a, such a need, Mr. Mayor, that, that we need to train the employees on how to interact with autistic?
One in 59 people have, are on the spectrum for autism. So if you think about our village population of 2,800 people, one in 59 are in the spectrum.
No, my math is right about 55?
So.
Will this be mandatory for the staff?
I would have to ask that question for all the staff or how many of the staff? But we would have to have staff training, yes. Okay. I think it's our decision if we want to be the, also a leader in the leading forward in terms of autism.
You've had some experience, Ryan and I, helping an applicant fill out the application and so on in the case.
It's a, it's a one-off, two hours.
It's two hours, if the need arises, when we get the designation. I would like that.
I mean, I want to do it, you know, I think we should do it, but I, I just don't know if the mandatory thing like is, what did the union say? I mean, I guess, no, I don't think.
If it's still a small staff, that's non-union.
Or non-union.
Yeah, that's true.
Right.
Okay.
If the employees of the Village Hall think it's of value and there's that much of a, and Mr. Fenton just cited one case, I don't know if there are many cases.
I mean, look how many people come in and pay their water bills, come in and pay their sewer bills. It's not just the ones that are interfacing with, you know, building, planning, and zoning or the ones that are coming, we have people coming into our building constantly all the time. And it's more of awareness and support.
Yeah, I mean, I'm gonna be there, you know, I will go. If I can make it.
Yeah, it would be open to us as well.
I mean, I think it gives our, it gives our staffs more skills, just for the times that they need it, they have to rely upon. But clearly, as evidenced by John and Ryan, they, without the benefit of training, they were still capable of managing the situation.
But I think, I think this is one of those issues that's kind of a growing awareness and I'm sure that there are techniques and certain do's and don'ts, which if you're not involved in the, in the, you know, the community, you wouldn't know about. So, you know, it seems like a worthy investment of a couple hours.
I'm not trying to be the Debbie Downer.
I'm gonna be the one that's gonna be trying to get the staff to come to this, so I would, I would schedule it and hope for the best that everybody will come, that.
And my feeling is if we have the support of the board, right, to be able to do that.
I, I'm just still struggling with, I didn't realize there was such a crisis or such a demand that our employees need to be trained. And then, it does make me wonder, what are some of the other unique constituents, groups of individuals with special needs that we should perhaps equally be considering?
This is a start. And right now, we have adopted and accepted the responsibility for making the Village of Reinbeck, Reinbeck, an autism supportive awareness community, where we are gonna be asking businesses and people to do one thing, to be able to support the awareness of autism. The Village Hall can be part of leading that way and getting the dual designation of not only thinking differently, but also, you know, supporting the initiative that this board has approved. So I have a motion, I made a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Sorry.
Abstaining?
You're, you're carried.
Doesn't mean I'm not supportive of autism, but I'm just not. Doesn't mean I'm not supportive of autism, but I'm just not where I guess the rest of the board is in terms of a understanding, so.
That's okay. Tree committee.
Okay. The tree committee met last week and had a really nice meeting discussion with Lou Timolo, who is representing the Frost Foundation. And basically, the Frost Foundation's mandate is to help projects of lasting importance to the Village of Rhinebeck. And long story short, basically, Mr. Timolo, actually, encouraged the tree commission to put forward several applications, potentially for funding a tree inventory of the village, which we need to do in order to get additional state funds. And also, currently, the village volunteer committee is very limited in terms of the kinds of trees that it can plant. Basically, they're called bare root plantings, and there's just a few ideas that these are trees that can be transplanted without a big root ball. And so we get, I've seen those pretty small trees, and it's always a fair, a small number. If the committee had more money, then they could get some more different kinds of trees. That would include things like evergreens and larger trees, different species of trees that would help, that would help the diversity and the availability of trees in the village. One thing that the Frost Foundation does like to see is participation from other entities, so that if they were, if, why don't we say this, the tree committee is going to work on several applications to the Frost Foundation for funding. However, the foundation really likes to see participation by other entities, so that they don't want to be the sole funder, they want to see that the village has buy-in as well for some, for these projects. So there is a modest $5,000 budget right now for the tree committee, which basically all goes to the planting of the fall and the spring trees. If the, we can discuss this a little bit more as we go on, if the, it seems like if the committee is going to be able to submit a successful grant, we may have to provide some additional either matching funds or some other funding along the way to demonstrate to the Frost, to the Frost Foundation that, you know, we really are backing this project, and it's something that is of long-term consequence to the village. So all in all, it was a very encouraging, a very encouraging meeting, but I do want to alert the board, as we get into our budget discussions, that I may come forth to you, and I'm not talking about hundreds of thousands of dollars, but additional monies that would be available to meet any, you know, to help, help underpin the, these projects. And I guess really the idea is here, if you're planting a tree, and some of the trees you plant here, they will be here for 50 or 60 or 100 years, so that when you...
Especially some of these larger trees.
When you're making this contribution to the, to the village, you're talking about some of the generations of people are going to, are going to see and interact with. So I wanted to bring that toward you, and it's a wonderful, like I said, it was a wonderful discussion with Lou Timolo. There was one application for a tree removal that was from 50 Livingston Street. There was a large maple, and it is rotten, has dead branches. The tree commission recommends removal of the tree by a certified arborist with all the proper applications. So I'd like to make a motion that we accept the application for tree removal at 50 Livingston Street.
Second.
Any discussion? Has the board been able to look at the tree?
I haven't.
I haven't seen it.
I think this tree's been in question for a few years.
Yeah, it's, it's not.
I haven't looked at it.
Even when I was on the tree committee, it was a...
It's in bad shape.
Yeah.
It's in bad shape, it needs to come down.
So we have a motion and a second?
Yeah.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying?
And I just want to think, just of interest, that the, our tree committee is really, it's a very active group, and coming up in July of next year, the New York State Relief Conference, it's R-E-L-E-A, conference is going to be held down in Newburgh. So our committee members are looking forward to really being fully involved with this entire, with this New York State group. This is an annual conference that people attend, there are workshops, demonstrations, best practices, that kind of stuff. So they will be, they're looking forward to being involved with that. And that's it.
Can I just mention that I did the application for Tree City USA? So I've applied, that's been, I did all the work, completed it all, submitted it, so we done, Mayor Bassett signed it, and it's been done.
No, thank you. No. Yeah, we were also going to remove the flags temporarily, they're in pretty bad shape. The one that we...
There's a new one in the safe.
Oh, the Tree City flags?
Yes.
Tree City flags?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, definitely. Tree City flags.
We have one Tree City flag downstairs in the safe, if you want, another one, I can order it.
Okay.
I think we usually get one here, don't we?
We have to purchase them.
Oh.
They're not given to us.
Now, did the board want the Tree City flag up during the winter, or did, because they do get...
I would take it down.
Take it down for the winter, yeah.
Yeah.
I would leave that to the, our tree commission liaison here.
I think take it down for the winter, while the leaves are on the trees, it should be...
They don't, they seem to be not made out of the same, like, American flag material, it's a little bit thinner, and, and they don't really handle it too, too well.
Right.
They're embroidered, they're just...
Instead of spring, spring and summer, well.
You know, we put these Tree City flags on our entrance signs to the village, so there's three total, right?
Yeah.
That we have. Our entry signs to the village are in very much disrepair, and they're being held together with whatever, right, right now?
Yes.
I know one time the chamber was interested in coming up with a proposal, but that's, I'm not sure where that's at. But we're in the, especially the one in the south side, it's ready to fall.
Yes. So we've been maintaining them for the longest time. It's at the point now where the surface of the sign basically won't absorb or take any more paint, so it's, it's at the point where they have to be replaced. Now, I remember at one point in the past administration, I think it was trustee, our shrink, was looking into possibly getting a donation to have the signs replaced. And we're not talking the sign stands, but just the signs themselves.
Right.
We can mount them in-house and get them back up. And so I wasn't sure, Pat, do you remember where that was at?
For some reason, I even had in my head, it was like a Boy Scout, Eagle Scout project to work on those.
Okay.
But I'd have to go through...
We just didn't get to the point of commitment?
No.
It was, it was...
It was discussed and it stopped in discussion.
We need to fix them, right? So either we can dig through that information and see what it is, but...
Who owns those signs?
We do.
We do.
We do own them?
Right.
It's not, not a chamber own thing?
There was a Boy Scout Eagle project that replaced the church signs that are underneath the welcome to Rhinebeck. Those were...
Well, that's out of further out in, out in the entryway, where all the signs are?
Yeah, underneath them, there's like four or five.
Yeah, but this is, this is the one big, welcome to the village, you're right.
Maybe that's what I'm thinking of.
That was a Boy Scout Eagle Scout project. So I'm wondering if the Eagle Scout project could take a big part of it as well.
I believe that, I know where the town of Wapakie, we supplied, the municipality supplied the material, and then I think it was an Eagle Scout, they basically assembled it and installed it, did a little bit of a landscape around it.
Too bad Assistant Chief Knapp wasn't here because he is a Boy Scout leader.
Well...
I think he is.
I can, next week at our Thompson Mazzarella Park Committee, Bob Ellsworth, he's also a leader of the Boy Scouts.
Make an inquiry?
Yeah, and he's always talking about getting, you know, Eagle Scout projects for different things, so I'll ask him next Wednesday.
But I think we should come up with a design, or somebody should come up with a design...
Yeah.
That gets approved, and then, so they're all three is the same, and they're durable, these are wood. We could probably do something in a more durable fashion these days than, than wood that we've been holding together.
Worst case, you can always give Duchess signs somewhere, but that's, you know...
My daughters and the Girl Scouts too, if you, if the Boy Scouts don't come through, then the Girl Scouts can...
I get it.
And they usually do.
All right, so let's, we'll wait, we'll wait for your feedback.
Yeah, I'll find out next Wednesday.
Okay, cool. There's something that needs to be done.
Sure, the girls, that's it.
Okay, is that it, we're done with trees?
Yep.
Environmental report. I'd like the board to open up, there's in, in the cloud, there's two pictures of our municipal parking lot, which is what I want to address first. And what I want to talk about is, we have a grant, we have a second grant, which has been approved and awarded for $38,000 for an additional set of two EV charging stations, which are originally, you know, targeted for, we were talking about using them up across from the library, but that did not materialize. We have an opportunity, if we do not take advantage, if we don't take advantage, that's where we're going to lose the grant, right? So I'll get into the details of how our existing charging stations are being used, but first, I'd like to lead off with where I'm proposing to use an additional, two EV charging stations for additional four cars. And this would be in our municipal parking lot, which is, which is across the street. If you're familiar where the handicap parking spot is today, this is the bottom chart of the two...
Oh, okay.
Where you see the four chargings, the four handicap stations in a row. So it goes, starting from the corner, goes handicap, then there's ash space for removal, then two handicapped, then more ash space, and another handicap, and then the two parking spots on the extreme right-hand side are really, that's not correctly drawn there, that should be a parallel, it's parallel to the curb, not perpendicular to the curb for that second. So that's the existing, how we stand today, and in the corner where that parallel car is, is a meter, and its sole purpose of that meter is to service just a few lights in the municipal parking lot. And I'll show you that in the next, you can see that in the other design, in the corner where I'm proposing, where it says a pole, where it says power. So what I'd like to propose is that we remove, we not remove, we take two handicap parking spots, move them from where they are on the west side in that west row, and put them over onto the south side as handicap parking spots, keeping all of our parking spots closer, closer to the sidewalk and easier access for handicap parking, and then take where those two handicap spots were and put in the two EV charging stations. Is everybody following me on the diagram that are drawn here? And it'll be the same physical size as what we currently have here in the municipal lot. Power can be drawn from the, from the meter, and there's actually the, a service panel underneath that, underneath that meter that we can run power from. There's a grass strip behind the curb, so all the digging would have to be, only digging that would have to be done, there was a trench in the grass, there'd be no disruption of the blacktop, except for where you planted, physically planted, the EV charging station like we did before, okay? So moving forward, this is probably less costlier than what it was for us when we did it here in the municipal lot, when we had to trench from the police department out and then trench along our municipal lot here in the back. This is a short stretch of approximately 40 feet of trench in, in a grassy area, which we would have to dig and bury, bury the power to the charging stations and put them, and we could make use of the existing grant. So any questions about the location?
This is right by the Big Bubba, the Big Bubba, right?
Yeah, the, the...
Big Bellies.
The Big Bellies are, are over here, more over to...
I have a water filter called the Big Bubba, that's...
So, yeah, they would not be, they would stay exactly where they're at, everything else remains exactly, the only thing that would be moving would be the two handicap spots from the west side to the south side. That's the only move we have to make of handicap.
Well, we're going to have two spots for handicap parking now?
Four.
Yeah, four.
Four.
Four, four.
We have four currently, and this is a...
The Thai restaurant.
We have four currently, and this is the four.
Yeah, so they have the Big Belly.
Okay, wait a second, I'll go to the chart here.
Okay.
Okay.
Are you, is everybody following what we're trying to do?
Yeah.
All right. So John, our DPW has looked at it, our highway department has looked at it for feasibility work, and the police department has looked at it and said they're all okay with it.
So Gary, when you say relocate south, you don't mean south way down here?
No, no.
You mean these right there, so...
We're, we're designed here.
So they still have handicaps, still have close access to restaurants and...
It's the closest spot, it's in that corner.
Right, right.
It's closer than what they were before, closer to the sidewalk, and closer to access to, and more, it's just more, it's more convenient for handicap, the way it is in terms of having to come out and go down the parking lot. They can quickly get out and get into this, onto the sidewalk. So it does improve handicap access, and also does not eliminate any of our other parking spots, except that we'll be replacing them with EV charging stations, so...
Go ahead.
Well, so what's the signage on those? Is that EV only, EV hybrid, EV preferred? What's the, how does that...
It's like any electric car that's capable of being charged electric can park there. So hybrid, that is, has a chargeable, they use our, currently they use our stations here.
But if your car is not, does not have the ability to plug in...
It, it's restricted from that. It would say EV only, EV chargeable.
By force of law or by force of custom? I shouldn't say that, but...
I don't know, there's a law, I'm sort of, I'm not aware of a law, but...
I mean, the signs that we have, and they're universal, it does state, for EV vehicles only when charging.
Right.
So I think that if you, there was no other spots, and that was the only one open, and there wasn't an EV vehicle, you could park there.
I don't know the law, I'll be honest with you.
Yeah, I'm concerned about losing some more parking spaces.
Yeah.
Overall, in the village, which is, I'm consistent with all night, because that's why I didn't want to approve no parking on the other streets we're talking about.
So my argument to that, trustee Trout, is we're not losing spaces, we're still providing spaces, and I'll show you in the other charts, the demand for those spaces.
Well, I'd be okay with, I think that's your question too, can other cars park there?
Yeah, it's multipurpose spaces. The signs that we have now that are going to be mounted in the, in the rear here, they say for, it says EV charging stations, do not park, obviously, if there's an EV vehicle there. I'll, I can easily take a photo and circulate it to you, but it is, it's for both vehicles, primarily for charging stations, but if it's not occupied, you can certainly park there.
I, I do think that a condition of the grant, that the charging stations are used for charging stations, that whether they're being, whether they're occupied with an EV vehicle or not, it's not intended for a dual purpose. I'd have to, I'd have to check that, but...
But the question is, what is the law, I think?
Well, we can make it, I mean, we could pass a, after a public hearing, we can limit those spaces.
But that would be...
Actually, we wouldn't even, I'm sorry, we wouldn't even need a public hearing because it's on, it's just on our property.
No, I just mean, I don't know that we could get, we could do whatever we want, unless we want 80% of the cost, the $32,000 from the state, then we have to adhere to...
We don't want to lose that.
Right, right. So I, I think the funding is contingent on what the state says, you want this money, here are the things that you have to agree to. But, Mr. Mayor, I would ask, what's been the use of the existing charging stations?
And that's why I would like to lead into it next, because first I told you where, now I want to show, if you go to the sessions chart...
The sessions?
Yeah, there's one chart that's labeled sessions. And our, our charging stations, our existing charging stations went online on August 13th, okay? So from August 13th to December 3rd, when I pulled these charts, what you can see is, on an average, there was, you know, number of sessions was 30 on any, you know, we peaked in, we started climbing in October, November, you know, and then started decreasing, but our usage of sessions has increased over time with these. The green line on the chart is the cumulative line, and the blue line, the bar chart, is the number of sessions that are being used during any time. So a session means, at any one time, like, say October, we'll pick the high point, November 5th, there's 34 sessions, okay? That means during that day, 34 people used that, used those four charging stations, all right? So 34 individual people used those individual charging stations.
During the week though, right?
Well, that's for the week, yes.
Yeah.
For the week, because this is... Yeah, for the week, because this is in weeks. So during that week, 34 people used the charging station. Now, if you go back, I'll take you to another chart. You go to the energy chart. Right, you can see how over time, we've been increasing the demand in terms of the usage of our EV charging station has continuously grown over time, to the sense where we've used 400 kilowatt hours. Now, 400 kilowatt hours, people will say, that's a lot. We pay seven cents a kilowatt hour, is what we pay. And we will get all this money back from the state. I'm working on that application now to apply to get the refund. But we're talking .07 times 400, right, which is what? $21 that we've spent in electric so far for this number of sessions. So one more chart. Go back. Which is unique drivers. Right, which says that, again, during those same weeks, these are different people, it's not the same people using the cars. So this is showing us demand, that we're getting an increased demand in terms of number of unique people who are pulling into our current EV charging stations. And a chart I don't have here, which I just pulled up right before here, we've had over 250 cars use our charging stations since August 13th. So in a short period of August, November, December, we've had 250 users. My point to you, Trustee Trout, is that we're not taking away spots. We're continuing to provide a spot for other cars to use.
How many spots do we have back here?
Four.
And there's like a demand, that people are waiting to use them?
There's, yes. And the Rhinebeck Chamber has come forward and said, yes, there's an increased demand for more cars, who when they're seeing that could use additional parking spaces. And we have the money to pay for it.
I think, Mr. Mayor, that I should, for the benefit of the board, because obviously you and I have been discussing the status of this second grant. The state came to me and said, what are you guys doing? So the mayor said, see if we could change the location. And to my surprise, they said, well, let, show it to us. You know, let's see what that represents. I haven't done that yet because we didn't know what the location was. So you are correct that there's a timeline. I have no idea how they're going to react. It's a year since we did those grants, and I wonder about the proximity between the existing one and the proposed one, Mr. Mayor. It may be too close to justify...
But that's not, we don't know until we...
Right, so I guess what I'm suggesting is, now that there's a discussion in an area, let me carry this back to the contact. Because I, for number one, I owe the individual a response. I've sort of been avoiding them. And say, hey, here's what we're suggesting, here's what we're proposing. Is there anything in the application that would be breached or complicated by what we're suggesting?
I spoke to the electrical contractor. And basically, if you go through with this, the service panel will need to be a total upgrade.
Yeah, it's a 200-amp panel.
Right, right, okay. Just wanted to let you know, we have to equate that into the number.
Yeah, it's a 75-amp panel over there right now.
Okay.
But that's still...
Similar to what we had in there?
Yeah, 200-amp panel is 50 bucks.
So I think that, that would be my suggestion. I, I'm delighted to see the charts. What's, what we wanted to have happen is happening. It seems like this is a good amount of activity, but I don't really know.
So could I ask a question about?
Sure.
When you're a driver, do you pull up these sites on like a GPS?
There's actually an app. And if you have an electronic vehicle, you're going to have some app that you're going to look up, you rely on, Brad, to see, I've got this trip planned, where are there stations?
So currently like ours are charge point chargers.
Thank you.
And there's a ChargePoint app, which is free. And you download the ChargePoint app onto your phone, and it says, you say, find charging stations near me, and it directs you right to them. Our charging stations are identified on that map, so that people can find them when they're in the village or coming through the village to charge.
And remember, we have the charging station up at the library, because as we advanced this, the town said, hey, listen, we wanted to do the same thing, and we're glad that they did. But suddenly, we're talking about, right up behind the library, there's the charging stations, right behind Village 12, there's charging station, and now potentially by the Thai Restaurant, charging stations.
Yep.
Yeah, I'm concerned about losing the parks.
And I, my argument is always, we're not losing.
No, well, but what he's saying is that the grant requires exclusivity.
We don't know that.
I think it does, but, so these are the things that are...
Yeah.
Now we know, this design is great. And in fact, this additional, the charts are great. So I've got information that I can go to the underwriters of this, you know, the administrators, and say, hey, here's where we're at, here's what we're considering. As I said, I owe a response to them. And they may say, this is great, you know? This is even better than what you first said. So let's get their blessing.
Okay. If the board agrees to go forward, it'll allow, you know, us to pursue that.
I have to close this loop one way or the other.
We either turn it in and say, sorry, we're not going to use your money.
Yeah.
Or...
What does it have to be in, by?
This was awarded to us in March of this year. And I think that there's an expectation that, you know, within 24 months of that award, it's up and running. Now, we haven't done anything, even any of the follow-up work that like Pat and I will do when we get a grant, and you have to upload this, and you know, we haven't done any of that. So that's why they're saying, hey, you know, it's nine months later, eight months later, where are you with this?
Which is a fair question.
I have to say that if, at this point, if those were going to be four dedicated EV spaces, at the time, at this time, I don't think I would advocate putting them in, seeing that we have spots here, and we have spots up at the library. I'd like to see the, you know, if we're really maxed out on those, then I would see it. But I feel like, you know, parking spaces are really precious in the village.
Yeah, that's our...
And however, if there's, you know, if they're like EV preferred, then I would see it. But if they're dedicated, I'm having a hard time losing or dedicating four spots over there when we have spots over here. And we have spots up at the library that are still available.
The issue with the ones at the library is they're not for people visiting the village. They're for people going to the library. They very seldom will park there and walk down to the village. So it's the convenience of the accessibility, and you're bringing additional people into the village who, while they're charging their car, are going to go to dinner. And they're going to go shopping, and they're going to do all these other things while they're doing a charge.
I understand, but I also feel like we've got to sit right here, they're on the app, they're going to get the usage. I mean, I've never seen four cars there at once charging.
I have.
Okay. So that's my...
There's also two more, there's Tesla ones at Smoky Rock.
Yeah.
But they can be used, I just looked it up on Google.
They're Tesla only.
This says, anybody can use a Tesla, is what it says.
So here's the way it works, Trustee Trout. I only know this because I do have a lot of cars, I'm biased.
Right.
Right? Let's submit it. Tesla can use anybody's charger, but only Teslas can use Tesla chargers.
Well, then this is wrong, what Google says here, so.
Yeah.
But that's why you need the app.
Those chargers behind Smoky Rock were put in at the time when they were Tesla only, and they've never been converted to anything else. They are Tesla only. And the last time I checked, they weren't even up and running.
No, they're wrong, they work.
We can get a ground lease and convert them with our grant. I mean...
That's, well, part of the process is, we need, you know, we get in-kind, so if we own the property, we get to apply that in-kind contribution.
That's correct.
Right? Which goes towards the application of the grant.
So ground, if we had a 50-year ground lease, that wouldn't be good enough? We can create a lease parcel and just lease those parking spaces from Smoky Rock. I mean, I have to say...
I don't think, I don't even think they can be upgraded without a full replacement.
I'm not against electric charging cars or electric cars. I'm just, don't want to lose any more parking spots in the village.
And so far Chevy and Ford has dropped most of their line or going all to, all to electric.
I understand.
And big trucks.
I'll make a compromise with you. Get parking back on Livingston Street, and I'll vote, yes.
Go for it.
Well, nobody's going to support me, so I'm not going to waste my time, so.
Mr. Mayor, I'll commit to taking this back to the administrators because we have some real specifics now that we did not have until this evening. And these charts are terrific.
And these charts are online. You know, you can view these charts at any time, get updated information. Our village clerk, Pat, has the login, I have the login. And so it's accessible for anybody to access the data. There's a lot more information out there.
Yeah.
On, specific to our charts, I've only pulled a subset of the charts that are, that are available. So I encourage you to make, to become aware of how much our chargers are being used. It's not, it's not again. So we'll table this until next month. All right?
Excellent, yes.
Okay. That's all I have for environmental for today. Parks Committee.
I have nothing to report. I know you're working on the dry hydrants, the...
Is that something separate?
John?
No.
No.
No, I mean the other time.
Since you're here, I thought I'd ask.
Yes. With the assistance of Pat Coon, we put an RFP together, and we put it out for bid, with short notice. Did we, did we put that on the website, do you know, Pat?
Yeah, I got, I got two bids on the website.
No, 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 did we actually put it out?
Oh, I mean on the portal.
Yes. It doesn't even matter, though, we did get it to four contractors.
Yeah.
And out of the four contractors, we only received two bids back. Okay? And one more was from TJR, who did the original work. And then the other bid came in from Paul Matthews. And that's where we're at. So the board, now, mind you, the bid packet was pretty specific. It basically laid out in detail the diagram that Crawford put together, and it was a mirror image of pretty much all our RFPs. And according to the specs in the bid package, that's what they placed their bid on. So that's where we're at.
So normally Crawford does a little summary and a recommendation. We're not that far yet, or, because we have the two?
Well, they keep it in house to keep costs down.
We didn't go out, we didn't, we didn't put it out to engineering or design. Because we had a design.
We already had the...
We had the design from Crawford.
They did the, they did the package, they...
Did you have a specific date to get back to us?
Yes. That was the 10th.
Right.
Yes.
So do you guys want to vote on tonight? I mean, we have the two.
Yeah.
There's not, I don't think there's anything else forthcoming.
The project due date, or final due date, I think, I believe is May 15th, maybe that was in the bid package.
Yeah, we wanted to coincide with what we're doing with the final wrap-up of the lake.
And we also have to have our DEC permit.
May 31st.
May 31st, okay. So we have to, you know, we're still waiting for our DEC permit. We're going to have to lower the lake. There might be some interaction with the ecosystem, so they want to make sure that everything is pretty much cut and dry for the DEC.
We should go. We should pick one.
Yeah. So we have the two bids. One was for $16,000. The second, that was from Matthews. The second one was from TJR, which was for a total of 29, I just lost my page, $29,375. Both require lowering the lake to a level to which you could manage to put in the existing pipes. And we could coincide that with any work we need to do with putting in our dock at the same time. So if, we could, we could time this in a way, so in the springtime, before we get the heavy rains, if we so choose to want to do it, we could do it in conjunction with getting everything prepared and finishing our work at the park. So there are the two bids. Both were done to the same design.
I've worked with both contractors. They're both stand-up companies.
This is not rocket science.
Yeah.
Right?
Pretty cut and dry. One of the contractors are probably willing to work with us a little bit more, a little flexible in their price. It's the lower one. And so that's really not a dead set price. And sometimes we're able to assist the contractors with respect to move in some soil, ship it in some soil. So there's a little flexibility there.
I mean, we've already talked about the need for a dry hydrant, for emergency services. So we've gone through that motion, and we said, let's go out and get information, because we felt there was a need as a way for us to be able to draw the water from the lake to be able to have that emergency prepared. So we had now the bids. So I'm going to, I'm going to take, make a motion that we accept the bid from Matthews for $16,000, $16,000 even, for putting in the dry hydrant at Crystal Lake. Second. Any discussion?
One question, while the lake is down, if we're putting the dock, is there anything else maybe not related to this bid we should be doing down at the bottom of the lake?
We're only draining at four feet. We're not draining the lake.
Okay.
We're lowering it four feet to be able to do this.
Okay, so it won't be empty?
It will not be empty. No, we don't want to empty it. Right? And if we lower it four feet, that gives us the ability to...
Get the work done.
Get this work done.
And the dam was rebuilt about two or three years ago, so the dam's in good shape.
Okay, all right.
We do have an issue. Now with this proposal, we have an issue with a property owner's personal dock that had broken away.
I saw that.
And it's hung on the dam.
So that's...
I was under impression that's been removed, or pulled off to the sides. It's still hanging on the dam?
Yeah, it was about four or five days ago.
I think it's been done recently. I just checked with the homeowner today, and he believes that it's been done.
Okay.
Because he had made arrangements to have it done.
Okay, because I was going to ask if it's not, I wanted to reach out to a contractor, have it done, and then build the property owner.
I spoke with the property owner today, and arrangements have been made for that to be done.
Okay.
Now, is it removed? I think it's pulled over to the far side.
Yeah.
And it's anchored over there, but it's off the dam. It's, if it's not off the dam, it will be off the dam.
Yeah, it's still on the dam.
All right, so I know arrangements have been made to do that.
Okay.
All right, so we have, we have a first, we have a second. All in favor of installing the dry hydrant on Crystal Lake? Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried? So it's awarded bid. Okay. Emergency Prepartness Committee. Let me just read the report quickly here. That's kind of a little bit of a summary of what happened last month, because both the town and the village have approved the confirmation of the volunteers for the Emergency Prepartness Committee that we went over last time, which were Sandra Blair, Joyce Meyer, Ron Nyfield, James Reardon, Ellen Silverstein, Jasper Spano, and Kathy Taggumire, so.
And David Miller.
Oh, did I miss David Miller? I apologize, David Miller was on the list. So these were, these have all been approved and appointed, and the next session is for our Emergency Response Coordinator to get everybody together to have the meeting. So that's it for the Emergency Prepartness Report. Other business. Village Clerk.
I am requesting, our village election is on Tuesday, March 19th, from 2019, from 12 to 9:00, and I have reached out to Duchess County Board of Elections, who provided me with a list of accepted and, I don't know if they're certified, but poll, election, or intake inspectors and machine inspectors. Most of the ones that I have are going to be intake inspectors, because I'm doing paper ballot again. Last year, my inspectors did paper ballot and I, they had a high turnout for the election and they did phenomenal, and we save, we save money, and I think it got done quicker than I would have if it was by the machine, so.
Is there, I don't, is there a charge?
For the county?
Yeah.
Oh, yes.
Because I have heard that it's now free.
No, and you have to hire their poll, their machine inspector at their rate of pay to have them come.
Okay, because I did hear that it's free.
Maybe if you have the county take over your election, but we do not, we do our own election. Elizabeth, I'd like to read the, my proposed, you have to approve them. I have, I have Republican and Democrat from two different parties, I have Elizabeth Bouts as intake inspector alternate, Susan Quinby as an intake inspector, Linda Janell as an intake inspector, and Joyce Meyer as an intake inspector alternate. I have Gina Fox as an intake inspector, Linda McAtier as a machine inspector, she also acts as an intake inspector, David Gelb as a machine and intake inspector alternate, and Helen Hartwood as an intake inspector alternate. And I am asking for the board's permission to appoint them as election inspectors.
I move that we appoint them as election inspectors.
Second.
All in favor?
I have one question.
Yep.
What's, what's a machine inspector do? Because is he an intake inspector also?
Yes. Yeah.
If something goes wrong with the machine?
Well, there's no machine.
No machines, it's paper.
It's all paper, and last year I had machine inspectors and they sit and they count the ballots, just like the intake inspectors do too. So they all work together, because there isn't any machine, so the intake inspectors and the machine inspectors both, they, you have a chairman of the inspectors, and they work together and coordinate amongst themselves, because even though I'm the one that, my election, this, they run it over there.
Right, but the paper you put in, that's not considered a machine?
No, they're putting it in, you put it in a ballot box.
Oh.
I have, it's a regular, the ballot looks just like the ballot that would go on a machine, but it gets put into a ballot box, and those ballot boxes at the end of the polls, the ballot box is opened and those ballots are counted manually.
Okay.
Most, there's quite a few village elections that that's how they do it, because it's cost prohibitive to have the machines and paying for the transportation, and machines are free, but you have to pay for the machines to be transported up here, you have to pay to have their inspectors.
So is this the first time we're doing a ballot box?
No, I've, I've been clerk, what, five years? I think we've done it three.
I don't remember. I do vote for myself.
Yeah. I think this is my fifth election and we've done it three.
The Boesies vote today, if anyone voted, was exactly what I was describing, was a piece of paper, you check it all up, fold it, put it in the box.
Yeah. And it's, it's democracy in action, because you see those ballots when they, when they close the poll, you see it open and they get, they get counted.
Okay, question answered.
Thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Very good. I'd like to make a motion to approve to November 13, 2018, and November 27, 2018. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained, so carried. Village Clerk. Correspondents.
I have, it's all on file in my office.
Okay, thank you. Now, the last thing that's on is an hourly MEO, an hourly laborer position. And Pat, let me find that here. Where is that located? I'm sorry, on the cloud?
I don't think I put it, the best way is the email that you and I went back and forth, and I have that here if you want to read it.
All right, well, I can kind of summarize, and Pat can help me around. So let me just summarize our issue. The issue that we're, that we've been dealing with over time is we hire contractors. We hire contractors to help us with, for instance, the highway department. And they come in and they'll drive a truck, or they'll help with brush pickup, or do whatever, and we, but when we hire them, we don't treat them as contractors. So in a sense, for a long time, we've been in violation of how we handle and work with our additional support staff that is helping us here in the village in a lot of cases. So one of the things that I've been working on for many months is how do we make this process legal in the, and legal with, in respect to the union, and legal in respect to the civil service laws, and legal in respect of accounting principles of how we handle and pay for contractors. So after a lot of discussion and working with the civil service department at the county, the county has proposed, and we've been working with them, that we define what is an hourly MEO position, and we can have multiple hourly MEO positions, and an hourly laborer position. The union has said that they will not contest any of these positions, and therefore it is open for us to be able to do it. And from an accountability standpoint, they're no longer contractors, in a sense, they become an on-call village employee. So when they, we fill out the civil service assignment and we make it available to Person A, and Person A comes in, we can have Person A stay for a day, a week, or a month, they can work up to six months, then they have to take a break, they can work for a 40-hour week, and they're not restricted, and we can pay them out of our normal pay process and not go through the contractor arrangement. It also gives us the ability to then give them direction versus when you're hiring a contractor, we are supposed to specify what we are hiring that contractor for, and what that contractor is supposed to bring to the job, and what the job that contractor is supposed to do. We don't do that. We say, come on in, Person A, we need somebody to help us drive a truck, because we're doing, or we're going to do snow plowing, we need a snow plow. We can have as many of these positions as we want, right? Let's pick a number, we can have three of each, and essentially it gives us a bench, and we can pick and choose, we don't, we can say, we like you, we don't like you, right? We like you, we don't like you, and we can pick and choose who we want based on the job, and we can, they're on-call, and we can say, right now, we need you for a temporary position to fill this, and it may only be a day, could be a week, could be a month, cannot exceed six months, at which time they would have to take a month off before they could come back and do work. If we're exceeding people for six months, then we need to look at, are we really at capacity and are we really using our labor resources right? They do not get benefits, there is no benefits associated with the position at all, so they get a straight hourly rate, which we set, and we can, and we, we set that rate in terms of what they are, and we can go out and we can have people, and we already have people who are available to fulfill these positions, but they've been not working in a, in a way that really is a legitimate fashion, which we should be conducting our business here at the village hall.
Do we need to make payroll deductions then?
We would, yes. We would treat them, because yes, they're, they're like an employee. We make the payroll deductions, they, one thing they are eligible for, they can opt into the retirement system, that's the only thing they can opt in for, but it's their contribution, not our contribution to their retirement. So they can opt in at their own contribution.
Can we use this person as little as 12 hours a week, one week, and three hours a week the next?
Yep.
And 40?
Yep.
Hypothetically, you have Person A, I have to, we have to do an RPC that says that they would be working from June 1 to December 1, six months. We could use them three hours one week, 40 hours another, depends on the workload, or if we find that we don't need them at all.
Don't call them.
They're done.
So theoretically, we, on our reorg meeting, we could appoint three people. Do we fill it with names, or do we just have a position identified?
We have the position identified. We don't need to fill it with names, we can actually use our DPW to make, to fill the position within the guidelines of the definition for an hourly MEO and an hourly laborer. And it could be as simple as their discretion, because they are going to know what's needed, they're going to know how long we need them, we can, you know, you know, get a report.
We'd probably do a resolution.
Yeah.
Based upon the suggestion or their suggestion.
But we may say, we, we may have a bench, and we may say we want Person A now, and we're going to say, oh, I'm sorry, that Person A is not working out, we're going to go to Person B. So it won't always, may not always be the same person, but it gives us, I'm going to, I really do call it a bench to be able to pull from.
Right, so we, right now, so we don't go off track with the budget, I sit down with Karen, and we basically have non-employee help, what have you, and so there's X amount of money in that budget, and we try to stick within that guideline. So, you know, that would, that money, I think it would be maybe taken out and put into an employee, you know, into our bulk employee budget.
Yep.
Take it out there, but we still stay within that, that line, that amount.
Amount, okay.
How would, how would you know, though? Excuse me.
Because we track it, we do our, our labor reports.
They would punch in and punch out.
Yeah.
So the thing is, civil service didn't want us to classify them as seasonal, even though it really is seasonal to us, because they're helping us out with leaves and brush, so it would be, as long as we stay within that timeframe, as we usually do, we'll be okay. If we exceed that, that's when we start going in, dipping into more money that we didn't anticipate.
And it's six months, so if you have someone that, and if you find that in July it's slow, you don't need them, then you terminate them, bring them back in August, then it's like a whole new six-month starting. So it's, it's a six-month continual.
There really isn't anything that, we've been doing this for a long as time, now it's, it's been recognized by civil service, and they're basically telling us how to do it, with their okay.
And we're legitimizing the way we are operating now.
Yeah.
Because we were not, we were not, we, we could have been subject to issues from any one of our contractors who were being treated as employees, and those employees.
There's certain factors to consider, whether a person's considered an independent contractor or a employee.
Right, they were being treated more like employees, not as independent contractors. This fixes that.
This fixes that, okay.
It closes that loophole, protects us as the village, still gives us the bandwidth to work with people that we even, that we have today who could fill these positions and make it work.
Lot of value.
Yeah, it, it just took a little bit, a lot of work with civil service, but.
I think we need, we need to do this, we could.
So you're saying six months, then if you don't use them for a week, does that mean the next six months kicks in, or does it have to be a certain amount of days?
She thought it had to be 30 days.
Yeah.
A 30 days off, or 30 days termination in between.
We got all some writing somewhere?
Yeah. And then, then she also, that's one of the reasons why there are multiple positions, so that it could be staggered, if there was another person, you could kind of, you know, so it's not with the position, it's with the person. You following?
So what I'm proposing is we actually develop three positions in each category that gives us flexibility, not that we will use all three, it gives us the flexibility to pick and choose, and also rotate depending on how we need it if we are doing it.
So when we hand shovel the big piles, because we're supposed to have a lot of precipitation this winter, maybe not this cold, but is that enough, three people?
Yeah.
To hand shovel?
Yeah.
If we have to, we actually legitimately contract out if we can't handle.
If you can't handle with the three.
Yeah, if we have to, if we have two feet of snow and we're cleaning the, and we're cleaning Market Street and cleaning it, pushing it all out, you know, then lots of times we use contractor help.
Right.
But that's then a true contractor, they're coming in for a specific purpose.
Their own equipment.
With their equipment, you know, et cetera, and.
Yeah.
That's what they're, we're, I mean, in this case, we're not, they're not even coming in with equipment. We're providing them with all their tools.
And they're jumping on the truck.
It would also put the MEOs that we have, that we've been using, on our drug testing where they have not been. It would also put them on our driving list where they have not been.
Because they're now a village employee.
So liability-wise, it would help as well.
Now, so there, there's a position of laborer?
Yes, there's two categories, one, hourly MEO, and hourly laborer.
Now, is that dedicated strictly to the highway department?
Nope. We can use them anywhere.
Okay, so the laborer can go to.
It's not, it's not, yes. It's not defined as to one department.
And the MEO has to have a license, licensing.
CDL.
I have the job descriptions here, it went right from the counties.
Oh, they have, they've already done the job description, right?
Yeah, we worked with them to develop the job descriptions.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I've already submitted to the county for a position duty statement, which they've approved, and we had a conference call today.
It's been approved by the county.
I think this is a lot cleaner.
Yes, refreshing, yeah.
To be doing business, yeah, it sounds like this old practice, needed to be freshened up.
Right.
Yep.
Made legitimate.
Yep.
So I make a motion that, did you make a motion?
No, yeah, I did.
Okay, second.
Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? Effective immediately.
Thank you.
Yeah. Very good. Okay, unless somebody has something for executive session? I do not.
No.
I make a motion to adjourn at 9:29.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.